Try to plug my phone in.
Here.
Mr. Whitman?
Here.
Mr. Sauer?
Here.
Mayor May?
Here, we do have a quorum present. Ask the clerks, please. Let's see, sorry. Get my agenda here. My first item would be the presentation from Ms. Ashley Greathouse from the Bluegrass Land Conservancy. Ms. Greathouse, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you for having me. Do you want to go and start then?
Please.
Ashley, can you turn your camera or your volume up a little? I can't hear you.
Now?
Still really low.
Good.
Better?
Better.
Better.
I'll just talk real close, I guess. Sorry about that. I'm trying to really briefly, but I'm sure you all have plenty of other things to talk about. And it sounds like you have a good idea of what an easement is already. But I will kind of start with a little background on our organization generally. We are a land trust, a regional land trust, and we have been around since 1995. We hold 33 easements on land in the Bluegrass region. Another long project is a little bit different. Thing is, it's a public park. But we are actually too hold easements like that. We don't currently have any public access easements. Most of ours are privately held by landowners. Don't allow them to access. However, it is something that we are... I know that you all have talked a little bit about the easement.
There's an Ashley.
Everyone needs to mute regardless if you're talking or not. If the only one person needs to be not muted, and that's the person talking. Because if you move papers, you sneeze, or anything, it's cutting her out. So if you could please mute, and you're not speaking, just mute.
I've spoken to the Civil War Preservation Trust a little bit about the possibility of a conservation easement on this Civil War site. We have actually worked with the Civil War Preservation Trust on another project in the past. It's not open to the public, but it was an archaeologically important site. So we are familiar with their organization and have worked with them before. It's something that, like I said, is a little bit different. However, it's because of the resources that they have, and hopefully they would be willing to potentially work with us again. I do think a conservation easement on this type of a property would be possible with Bluegrass Land Conservancy. You know, as far as our process goes about a conservation easement, we typically meet with the landowner, or in this case, I guess, the city commission, and really discuss kind of what you all's goals are for this project. I actually went out there a couple of weeks ago, so I did get to see it. I'd never been out there before. And it, I mean, it's a property that fits our criteria for land that we would consider. It's wooded and open. I know that there is, I guess, maybe a house on the property, and then obviously several significant archaeological features. So we are definitely able protecting the historic resource through our conservation easement. Our document can add levels of protection in addition to just an open space on a scenic, non-development type of an easement. So anyway, that first step really is just us going out there with what I've already done. If you all are interested in moving forward with the next step in the process is to just an email. Nothing that we do at this would bind, however, would allow for our on this project, and whether or not we would spend resources to explore the possibility of a conservation easement on the park. So I'm after this presentation, I guess, just know that that is really kind of our first hurdle. That you're not bound by that decision at all. And then, once you all decide whether or not you would like to move forward and explore that property, we would work with you to create the terms of the conservation easement. Has been some concern, I guess, about passive recreation versus active recreation possibly. So I know that that is something that, you know, we would, as an organization, need to understand a little bit better. And also, you know, you all would need to direct us as to the type of public access that would be allowed on the property. Once we get that nailed down, we would do a baseline documentation report on the property. So we would go out to document all of the historic resources, the open space, natural resources on the property, and put that whole report together. In the meantime, we would also be doing due diligence. So we do a title search on all of our properties that goes back 60 years, obviously. This is a little different. I'm assuming the city's owned it for quite a while. But we do need to make sure that there is clear title to the property and that the boundaries are clear. So I don't know if y'all have a survey, if that's something that's pretty straightforward or not. But that's part of this whole process. We would draft the conservation easement. We do that in-house, and then we would send it to you all for review. Our board would then evaluate and review all of the final terms that we would negotiate at that point, and determine whether or not they would be willing to accept the final conservation easement. We do that during a board meeting, which we have four of those a year. We have one coming up in June, and then we don't have another one until September. So that's the only time we would be allowed to actually approve final easement terms. And then, once that is approved, then we would be able to sign, and then, of course, record the conservation easement in the county clerk's office. That's just kind of our overall kind of process for how this would even work. If this is something that you all do decide you're interested in. We, ah, sorry. I lost my thought process. You know, we are happy, I mean, I'm happy to talk to you a little bit more about like the actual, what a conservation easement is as far as, you know, generally speaking, and the flexibility and the terms involved, and, you know, how it restricts land in perpetuity. But I was told that you all are pretty familiar with conservation easements. So if you want to just open this up to questions, I know y'all don't have much time for me. So you want to start with kind of asking me where you'd like to go in this discussion? I'm happy to just start.
Ashley, would you actually go over just generally, for anybody that might be watching, just a quick synopsis of what an easement is and what it would entail?
Sure, yeah. A conservation easement is a legal agreement between the landowner and the land trust, such as Bluegrass Land Conservancy. And it's a flexible agreement that we negotiate. We are governed, the organization, this nonprofit land trust, is governed by the Internal Revenue Service. So we're a 501(c)(3), and they govern land conservation easements generally. So we are bound by Section 178 of the Internal Revenue Code as far as how we can draft and hold conservation easement. So those terms and the templates that we use are guided by the IRS. However, we do have a little bit of flexibility within that, and there are very different types of easements. This is something that would be, I would imagine, more of a hybrid type of an easement, where we would have open space protections, as well as maybe even protections on the wooded areas, the archaeological resources, and also the historic structures. Easements can be multifaceted that way. So we would negotiate those terms with you and be drafting that in accordance with the Internal Revenue Service. This is not, obviously, a tax-deductible easement, as it's the city that owns the property. So normally, we would have a lot more hoops to jump through, because most of our easements are tax-deductible. The landowner gets a substantial tax deduction for donating a conservation easement. But in this situation, since we're not taking a tax deduction, we have the liberty to be a little bit more flexible with the terms in this easement than we would normally be, which is probably nice for you all, as it's a bit of a different project. So that's really it. I mean, it is in perpetuity. Conservation easements with land trusts are in perpetuity. So it's going to be, like I said, record-holed in the county clerk's office, and it will run forever with the land. All of our easements are insured through TerraFirma, which is a national insurance group that ensures conservation easement. So we do pay a premium every year to ensure each one of our easements, just in case in the future any of our terms are violated. It helps us with our legal fees associated with defending the terms of our conservation easement. We also do request a stewardship contribution for each one of our easements that we hold, and we keep that money in a stewardship endowment. And we track those dollars specifically to each property. And our organization also annually contributes to that fund, so that if we do have violations, we can afford to actually defend those conservation easements in perpetuity. We monitor every easement every single year. So we will be out visiting the property at least once a year, sometimes more than that. We do schedule those visits with the landowner in advance. We don't usually show up and mount before, but we, and we do like to meet people at that time and answer questions. We, you know, a lot of our easement language is, we really try to be intentional in our drafting. We don't have to go through a lot of notices and approvals with our conservation easements, because frankly, it's a stewardship problem to constantly be going through that process with our landowners. So we really like to draft in such a way that it's very clear in the document what you can and cannot do on the property moving forward. So, you know, we really, we don't want to be involved in the day-to-day operations or anything like that. And we really try to kind of be as hands-off as possible in that regard. Does that kind of answer, answer your question as far as what a conservation easement is?
Yeah, thanks.
Mayor. Go ahead, Commissioner Sauer.
Mayor, I don't know if Eric Cockley or Rebecca Hall is on the line, or either one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Eric, I get, Eric, don't we use the conservation easement on all of our downtown reinvestment grants? So this is nothing new.
Mayor.
Well, that's a, we use an easement instrument for a little bit different purpose. As you may know, which just helps us make sure that we invest those tax dollars in those projects, that for a period of time, we make sure that if somebody does something to essentially reverse that, that investment. Say, say the grant went to fix a, fix some whole house in the district. In case two years from now, somebody decides to demolish that porch, that's what we have that easement for, for a clawback. So it's similar. I mean, easements are used for any number of things.
Right.
I think Rebecca, I think Rebecca always called them a conservation easement, even for neighborhood reinvestment.
Yeah, yeah. Where'd you put this on there? But there exactly is Eric explained.
I don't think I explained that very well. Are, they essentially restrict the property from being developed. So they are going to prohibit the property from being subdivided in the future, or sold off in small tracts, or they're going to prohibit future residential structure. Any number of things. Most of ours do allow agricultural structures, but I know this is a different type of easement. So we would probably restrict all people, I would imagine, or something. I'm not, you know, it really is kind of up to you. But ours, our easements restrictors, and they also restrict the ability to divide the property moving forward. We do allow, through the landowner, to negotiate limited divisions and limited buildings back into the easement, essentially. So if you do know that, for instance, you all are going to want maybe like a community center or restrooms or something like that in the future, we can definitely have language in there that allows for those types of structures as needed. Or if you want the community to be able to sell 10 acres of the park at some future point, we can have language in there that would allow for something like that. That's all negotiable. But really, they, these types of conservation easements, then yes, there are tons of different types of conservation easements. But our, the type that we're talking about would really prohibit future divisions, future buildings. It would also, as needed, protect some of those historic resources from being removed and protect the archaeological resources from being disturbed. So that, that's the type of conservation easement that we're talking about in this particular case.
Thank you.
Mayor May, actually, a couple of thoughts. I had talked initially, quite a while ago, back last year, with the, the Civil War Battlefield Trust.
Mayor.
Yes.
Probably taking more easements now. So when I suggested that we do an easement on Fort Hill, it was with Bluegrass Land Conservancy in mind as really one of the only entities outside of my personal nonprofit that I have run, or the Kentucky Heritage Council, that would hold this type of easement. I think you all are one of the, the only options. Would you say that's, that's right? That I have a follow-up?
Yeah.
Don, can you roll your window up?
Who?
I think John's car window is cutting her out.
Um, so yeah, you, you would want to have a land trust, like a 501(c)(3) nonprofit land trust, like us, hold the conservation easement. But like you said, governmental organizations are allowed to hold it. So, well, the Kentucky Heritage Council, obviously, would be a great option. Even, I mean, like the Fayette County PDR program has a rural land management board, so it's a quasi-governmental group that owns, you know, that holds those easements. I don't know of another land trust, per se, that would be, I mean, this is going to be a more complex conservation easement project than, you know, you normally see. And I think you probably want to have an organization that is experienced in holding easements, you know, because of that. So I'm not sure who else would be qualified that's working in Frankfort right now.
Um, just a point of clarification, I suppose. You know, this, this is an idea that the commission would voluntarily give another entity perpetual oversight over one of our city-owned properties. And this would forever restrict future commissions or whatever form of government we have in a thousand years from being able to develop that property in a way that is inappropriate to the standard set currently. So it doesn't mean that there's maybe exclusions that we can't have space for future cell phone towers, for example, that there is one up there currently that we need to make progress or successions for certain elements like that, the existing cell phone tower, which will probably morph over the years. But we can otherwise say what is permissible and is not permissible activity on this parcel of land really forever here. So the process really is one that, that needs to be thought out and, and give some thought to or ability for future development needs that we have no idea what those may be in the future currently. But sets, sets precedent for what we, we want to envision on that property forever.
Mayor.
Who's talking? Uh, Laura?
Can you hear me? Um, I have a question, if it's okay. Um, Ashley, thank you. Did you say that you, and I'm sorry, I missed a bit of the beginning of the presentation. Did you say that you do have other city governments who have done easements like this on city property?
We don't actually own any other, we don't have any other conservation easements on city-owned property. We have, however, worked with the Civil War Preservation Trust, which I think it's called the Battlefield Trust now, right? They changed their name. But we have worked with the Civil War Preservation Trust to protect another Civil War battlefield. But it's not owned by a city, it's owned by a private landowner.
So, okay.
We have actually worked with other groups. Actually, certainly working with other groups on projects that are owned by nonprofits, or really just nonprofits, and some religious groups. So that would say that those are similar to what you are talking about.
I guess, I'm just wondering, we have a really strict prohibition against binding future legislative bodies from taking legislative action. And so if we do a perpetual easement that restricts what we do with the land, we just need to make sure that we are not running afoul of that constitutional and statutory prohibition. So I was just wondering if you all had ever encountered anything like that before? And, or if you could find some info, or if you do happen to, if you wouldn't mind forwarding it along to me?
Yeah, I, I don't know off the top of my head. I know that there are plenty of other organizations that have worked with, you know, local, state governments. And I'm assuming that they have similar restrictions that you're...
Okay, sure. Um, that's just...
We'll look into that.
Thank you.
Mayor. Mayor.
Commissioner Tippett.
Mayor. Thank you. Man, I've been trying to get in this conversation.
Sorry, I can't.
That's okay. Any frozen?
Did we lose Commissioner Tippett?
I believe so.
Commissioner Tippett, can you hear me? Believe we've lost.
Um, does anyone else have questions?
Can you guys hear me?
There we go, you were back. We lost you there.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Oh. We lost you again.
Hello. Are there... But I'm saying, uh, we're trying to crack down on easements, and what is, is a way to determine what is historically significant. And I view it as, as the easement as a placeholder for us to determine exactly what it is we have a value on that property. You know, and then the city with that arm of that information can make the best decision it possibly can for its property. Okay? That's my personal view on it. Can you disabuse me of that? Is that an incorrect look at it?
I missed the whole first part of that, I'm sorry. You cut out for the whole first part.
Okay. What I was just saying was, it, we, we can craft a malleable doc, document. And what, what I envision is, is that the city uses this as a placeholder, so we can determine what is historically significant on our property. Okay? And then that will then harm future commissions with the built-in the information to make the best decision as to what's available for them to do with our, with their property and their assets. That's my opinion of this. Do you see it that way?
Is this, who's the question for?
Oh, it's Commissioner Tippett.
It's for Ashley.
Oh. Um, I don't, I don't, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking. I'm, it's not really, I wouldn't call it like a, well, I mean, it's a perpetuity document. So whatever is drafted into this easement is going to be there forever. So as far as a placeholder, I don't, I mean, I guess you could see it that way. But it's, it's not, it's not malleable after it's, it's drafted. So it's malleable in the sense...
So we, we, right. So we have to do a very good job of making sure we, we craft the language in the beginning that allows for all these things that will go on into perpetuity. I guess that's what I'm trying to say, right? It's, it's the legwork and the preparation in the beginning that really is important.
Yeah. Yes, very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I don't, I can't see everybody. I can see at the bottom of my screen, if somebody starts to talk, I can see who's talking, but there's a, a little bit of a delay. So if I miss over, I'm sorry, if I miss anyone or pass over, I apologize. Just give me a second to catch up. Did anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay.
Just thank you, Ashley, for explaining this fully to everyone. And I think it's a process we should explore to preserve the historic aspects of Fort Hill in perpetuity, to ensure that those are never damaged, destroyed, or...
Mayor.
...little process to, often ensuring the preservation of those sites. But I'll remind everyone that it is a, a document that is malleable in its creation, and it can allow for different aspects to be for use of that park space for different items in the future. And we need to be cognizant of, of what future generations will need and allow appropriately for those activities, as well as ensuring the, the preservation of the historical resources.
Thank you.
Sauer, do you want to chime in?
Yes. Ashley, you mentioned your board meetings being in September and also in June.
And we have another one in December.
From your experience, can we get the job done by June if we decide to go forward on this?
Uh, I would say June would be probably not. June and maybe in a different circumstance, but the coronavirus has really set us back a little bit as far as being able to get out there and really gather information quickly. I would say September would probably be the earliest. There's a possibility, if we, if we can negotiate the terms. So we don't actually have to have the entire project completed by the June board meeting. For our purposes, we just need to have final terms by the June board meeting, which means that we would just need to know, for instance, like that passive recreation versus active recreation. We would need to know, you know, which historic resources you want additional protections for and what those protections look like. So, I mean, we can just do so many different levels of protections on our properties that we would, we would need to know, like, if you want divisions, what, what future structures you would want on the property. And we don't even have to have it drafted necessarily. We just need to know those general terms. And then we have our board approve those terms at our June board meeting. And then we can get the project completed, as possible. But, um, but, yes.
Ashley.
What? Excuse me, Eric.
Oh, sorry.
We've just, uh, just one...
You have something else?
Just one follow-up, Mayor, I'm sorry. Ashley, the next meeting after September is when?
There's another one in December, early December.
Thank you.
And now, Mayor.
Oh, go ahead. Mayor.
Actually, I thought that, that we could use the archeological survey of Fort Hill and the known historic sites to create a, let's say, an initial easement that could be added on to as we develop more fully the, the potential that we've talked about of a cultural landscape, which might change the, you know, the narrative around Fort Hill and the historic context and period. But we could start with the aspects that are the earthen works and bankments from the Civil War, the fortifications, and define how we want those to be protected in perpetuity, and the amount of area that we want protected. And then be able to add on subsequent easement language for additional resources as we define them too, right? This could be a, a bit of a phased approach, so that by June, possibly, although not likely from my experience, we could have at least the, the Civil War, Civil War archaeological components protected in some manner, or definitely probably by the September meeting.
Yes, we can do amendments to existing conservation easements. Those amendments, though, are heavily regulated. And so we can only amend the easement to make it more restrictive or to add conservation value. So as long as you're not lessening any of the restrictions on the, you know, prior easement, then, then yes, we can amend the easement to make them more restrictive and to encumber more land. That's totally possible.
Commissioner Tippett, did you want to say something?
Are you there?
We are, you're kind of breaking up on us, unfortunately.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Are you there? I moved the direction. I moved to direct staff. Prepare a non, a non-binding letter of intent to be signed by the mayor to engage Millgrass Land Conservancy for a conservation easement for Leslie Morris Park. A motion for a non-binding letter of intent.
Okay. City Clerk, did you get that?
Most of it. Um, Brett staffed to send a non-binding letter of intent for Leslie Morris Park?
Yes, to be signed by the mayor.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it's a motion by Commissioner Tippett and second by Commissioner Sauer. All right, are there any questions? Commissioners have questions or comments? All right, I don't think there's any. I'm gonna kind of pause just to be sure. All right, no other questions. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldridge? Yeah, Commissioner Tippett? Okay. Commissioner Tippett? Commissioner Wisman?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Somebody was calling in. Did you call my name yet? Somebody started calling in on the phone, so it blocked me out.
Yes, Mayor May.
Yes, I vote yes, please. So that motion carries. Um, this great house, thank you for being with us tonight.
For having me.
A little different experience.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right, thanks. If y'all have any questions, just let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Bye.
Bye. The next item would be the consent items. I'll call on uh, City Manager Keith Parker.
Thank you. Uh, the first item is, uh, may, hold on just a second. First item is approval in minutes of the March ninth, twenty twenty work session, March twenty third, twenty twenty regular meeting. Second item is the arts and cultural master plan consultation recommendation, recommendation rec. A staff request authorization to award a contract in designing local in an amount of fifty thousand dollars. For twenty thousand dollars being the city's match to the National Endowment of the Arts, our town grant. Uh, number three is the build grant. Uh, staff request approval to apply for the twenty twenty build grant to support planning for the revitalization of the Homestreet Corridor. If awarded, the federal fortune will be six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, and the city match will be a hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. Item four is the K H U after-school program. Staff request approval to execute an M O U with Kentucky State University to allow the city police department to assist K S U with the U S Office Minority Health Grant. Please call me Mister. There will be minimal physical fiscal impact. Item five is military rates for Jennifer Golf, Jupiter Hills Golf and Aquatic Center. A staff request approval to create military discounted rates for golf course and the aquatic center beginning on May first, twenty twenty. Item six, staff request approval to purchase a hard drive shredder for eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Utilizing the grant funding from the twenty nineteen twenty Kentucky Recycling Program. We utilize existing personnel costs with a twenty-five percent match. Item seven, staff request approval to award the bid for the Collins Lane Storm Sewer Project to free contracting in the amount five hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. Four bids were received, the free contracting was low bid. Item eight, uh, request approval of a contract with Public Consulting Group to administer the ambulance supplemental payment program for the city of Frankfurt. The component will get twelve percent of all fees collected, and we expect a new revenue revenue stream that could reach two hundred and seventy-five thousand a year when fully implemented. Item nine, request approval to extend the contract with Foil and Associates. Provide administrative assistance to the Frankfurt Sewer Department. The consultant will be compensated compensated at a hundred and ten dollars an hour, and existing vacancies will cover this cost. Item ten, request approval to accept CARES Act funding in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars, which be can be used for past, current, and future COVID-nineteen expenditure. Item eleven, item eleven is personnel actions. Uh, the first is appointment of Kenneth Blair to the fire department effective four twenty-eight twenty as firefighter two. Appointment of Aaron Warren to fire department effective four twenty-eight twenty firefighter two. Appointment of Alicia Boyd, finance department effective May twelve, twenty twenty, finance director. Appointment of Michael Hess, sewer department effective June ninth, twenty twenty, is design engineer. Demotion of Kelly DeRocic, Police C nine-one-one, effective four twenty-eight twenty, telecommunicator two, T A C, telecommunicator two. Resignation of Von Holker, Police C nine-one-one, effective four twenty twenty, telecommunicator two, T A C, authorized payout of crude leave. Promotion of Albert Woodrum, Police C nine-one-one for effective four twenty-eight twenty, telecommunicator one, the telecommunicator one, T A C, promote promotion of Courtney Fallas, Police C nine-one-one, effective four twenty-one twenty, telecommunicator two, to telecommunicator two, T A C. That is all the consent items.
Okay. Commissioner Tippett, did you just make a motion?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Okay, move by Commissioner Tippett.
Second.
I think I moved to approve.
Second by. Yeah, you did. And second by Commissioner Sauer, all those members who signify their presence uh, tonight will be considered to be uh, voting in the affirmative unless there's vote modification forms. We have one vote modification form. Uh, one, uh, not voting on number seven.
Correct, yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, next would be action items. We'd ask that city solicitor read action item, uh, sorry, ordinance number one. Uh, give it second reading by title and summary only, please.
An ordinance amending chapter seventy-four, schedule one, one-way streets of the city of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. This ordinance amends chapter seventy-four, section one of the city of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances and provides that West Main Street between Anne Street to Wilkinson Boulevard, going west between Anne Street and Wilkinson Boulevard, will no longer be a one-way street. The effective date of this ordinance amendment shall be upon completion of all construction converting West Main Street to two-way.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Uh, would read a motion in a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Commissioner, second by Commissioner Waldridge. Any discussion? See none. Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldridge? Commissioner Tippett?
Commissioner Tippett, are you voting no?
I voted no, Mayor.
Okay. City Clerk, did you get that?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Um, I will vote yes. Uh, motion carries. Next, we would need second reading by title and summary only on item number two, please.
An ordinance rezoning property located near the intersection of East Main Street and Aspen Avenue with the addresses of seven oh two and seven oh six East Main Street, more specifically described as P V A map numbers oh seven four four one oh eight oh one one, oh seven four four one oh eight oh one oh, and oh seven four four one oh eight oh oh nine from professional office district to general commercial district. This ordinance approves a zone map amendment for the property located at the intersection of East Main Street and Aspen Avenue with the addresses of seven oh two and seven oh six East Main Street, more specifically described as P V A map numbers oh seven four four one oh eight oh one one, oh seven four four one oh eight oh one oh, and oh seven four four one oh eight oh oh nine from professional office district to general commercial district.
Okay, we need a motion.
Move that we approve?
Could we get this?
I got a motion by Commissioner Sauer and a second by Commissioner Tippett. Is that right? I've lost Commissioner Tippett. Second, Commissioner Tippett, did you, did you make a?
He's gone.
Okay. Commissioner Wisman, did you just make a second?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Sauer and a second by Commissioner Wisman. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
All right, any discussion? I don't think there's any discussion, so ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldridge? Let's, Commissioner Tippett, um, Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor May?
Uh, yes, that motion is adopted. Um, is there a way we can get Commissioner Tippett back? His name is still on my screen, but I I don't have any uh, thing but a a a black square.
Mayor. And without seeing him, of course, we, okay, we can't count his vote.
Right. Can someone maybe try to call him and let him know, uh, if he can't hear us here, that we've lost him on our feed?
I'm texting him.
Okay, maybe uh, he could uh, uh, like end and come back on, like leave the meeting and then come back on to it. Did, uh, Bobby, can you hear me? Oh, he's. Go out and come back in. Okay, that's what I thought. I thought that would just re-clear it if we could do that. Yes. So um, do y'all mind if we wait just a second to let him get back in with us? Instead of waiting that we can move down? Now we've lost Commissioner Wisman.
Okay, well, it looks like after this meeting, if we could have everyone have their little uh, training session with Bobby would be great. And that way we can zoom and go to meeting successfully.
Hey, Commissioner Wisman, could you hear me? Did you, did you, we lost you for a second. I don't know if you did that.
I paused.
From your end, or if you just lost the feed?
No, I was just getting a drink.
Oh, you paused it, okay. Okay, got it. So yours was intentional. Perfect.
Yes.
So Commissioner Tippett is gonna come back in on us here in just a second. Hopefully. Okay. Okay. And I was gonna say, for the record, last week, um, turns out I I have a hundred meg, so, I mean, a hundred, you know, like, which is super high, so it was the cellphone reception apparently on my end. Um, we checked it.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Tippett, can you hear us now? You're back.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Next item would be number three. Yes. Can anybody hear Commissioner Tippett?
We can't see him. Uh, Commissioner, can you? I think you have to be seen participate, and Laura said, can you see if there's a button you can hit?
Okay. Turn the camera on. I got it. There you go. Here I am. I'm back.
Okay, everybody good? Okay, uh, next item would be, I remember three, read this by title and summary only, please.
An ordinance to amend the city of Frankfurt's Code of Ordinances, chapter one fifty-two, by amending the city of Frankfurt zoning regulations, article nineteen, subsection nineteen oh seven, home occupations. This ordinance amends the city zoning ordinance, article nineteen point oh seven, to amend the city's regular regulations on home occupations.
All right, we need a motion in a second, please.
Move to approve, Mayor. Move to approve.
Move by Commissioner Tippett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sauer. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I will.
I don't think there is, so see none. Clerk, please call the roll. I'm sorry, Commissioner Wisman, do you have?
Yeah, I was just uh, going to say I still had some concerns. There's um, you know, I think we should give this a little more time before we approve. Um, there's uh, a couple of areas that state that um, the home occupations shall not be um, and uh, some other items like that, and sometimes they're a little troublesome as well as um, um, statements that uh, arts and crafts are a primary uh, type of business that should be uh, for a minor usage. I just uh, I think we still need to look at this a little bit coming out of what we're about to come out of. We're going to see probably an increase in hobby businesses and other small business centers that we need to be accommodating as possible, and I'm concerned we're limiting ourselves prematurely a little more than we should. Even though we have uh, this already on the books, in a sense, we have um, some language cleanup quite a bit here and some definition, but still, I think we we can edit it, of course, accordingly as we need to later if this passes.
Right, and you're correct, Commissioner, we can, we can amend this because of the uh, recent changes, if something that's important. Was somebody trying to get recognized? Commissioner Tippett?
No, I'm good, Mayor.
Okay, I saw your name flash up. All right. So we have motion in a second. If there's no other discussion, clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Walbridge? Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
No, for the reasons stated.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, that motion passes. Next is number four, and we'd read this by title and summary only, please.
An ordinance amending the City of Frankfurt's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 152, by amending the City of Frankfurt zoning regulations, Article 3 and Articles 4.114, 4.124, 4.134, and 4.144, to include street-side setbacks. This ordinance amends the city's zoning ordinance, Article 3 and Articles 4.114, 4.134, 4.134, and 4.144, to amend the city's zoning ordinance to include street-side setbacks.
We need a motion in a second, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Or questions? I don't think there is, so clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Tippett?
No, we don't have you, buddy.
Commissioner Tippett, we cannot hear you now.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, that item's adopted. Next item would be second reading for item number five.
Yeah.
An ordinance. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Tippett, were you trying to get recognized?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay, an ordinance amending Section 90.23B of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances relating to the Humane Society Trap, Neuter, and Release Pilot Program. This ordinance amends Section 90.23B of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances to extend the pilot program whereby the Humane Society traps, neuters, and releases feral cats within the city for an additional year from May 1st, 2020.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Move back Commissioner Wisman? Second back Commissioner Wal, is that right? Okay, is there any discussion or questions? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Walbridge? Mr. Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes, yes.
Mayor.
I'll vote yes. That item passes. Next item would be first reading of item number six, so it has to be read by title and summary only, please.
An ordinance amending Sections 91.15 and 91.16 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances relating to Chapter 91 Streets and Sidewalks. This ordinance amends Section 91.15 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances to incorporate by reference the 2020 version of the right-of-way standard. Delete unnecessary permits and fees. Increase permit fees for street sidewalk closure, driveway, sidewalk, storage pod, dumpster, temporary parking, and general permits from $20 to $25 each, and add a $150 refundable deposit for lighted barricade rental. The ordinance further amends Section 91.16 to increase the fee for damaging or excavating pavement to the pavement repair estimate plus 15% increase from 10%.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions on, on this first reading?
I have a quick question.
I don't see any, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Is there a start date identified here, or does it just go into effect soon as the second reading's over?
I don't believe there's a start date identified, although somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is like any other ordinance, and will go into effect on the second reading after, well, when published.
Thank you.
After published.
Thank you. Next item is the authorization for a Kentucky Office of Homeland Security MOU with the City of Frankfurt for continuing to work with the Kentucky Intelligence Fusion Center. If there's any questions, we'll answer those. If not, we'll ask for approval.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Move back Commissioner Wisman.
Second.
Second back Commissioner Tippett. Any other discussion? I see none, clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Walbridge? Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
I'll vote yes. The item is approved. Next would be authorization for the police department to apply for the 2020 Kentucky Office of Homeland Security grant for the purchase of body armor and ammunition. And if there's any questions on that, we can answer those if we'd ask for approval.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Move back Commissioner Wisman?
Second.
Second back Commissioner Sauer, any discussion? It doesn't appear to be sad, so clerk, please call roll.
Mr. Walbridge? Mr. Tippett? Commissioner Tippett?
Commissioner Tippett, can you hear us?
You want me to move on, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, Commissioner Tippett, can you hear us before we move on? Okay, we'll go ahead and say that, that motion is passed. Next item would be the Parks Master Plan. If his commissioners have any questions, we have staff available to answer any questions.
Could I give an update? Does anybody else have the floor?
Sure, no, go right ahead.
Our Parks Master Plan, RFQ, was due last week, last Thursday at 2:00. Since that time, we've received them all, distributed to the Parks Master Plan Review Committee, and we have narrowed the seven respondents down to the top four. The, the next step in the process is we are, we are emailing them the RFP that has that May 11th deadline where they'll submit more detailed proposals on master plan, including cost estimates, and on May 11th, we'll receive all those responses and grade them again.
Commissioner Sauer, are you trying to get recognized? I've lost you now, but it's on the screen that said you were talking, so I didn't know if you wanted to be recognized. Commissioner Sauer, we have lost you now. There we go, you're back.
Not again.
Commissioner, there we go, Commissioner Sauer.
No, City Manager summarized it perfectly. I appreciate that very much.
Mayor, number five.
Any, any other commissioners? Commissioner Wisman?
You know, I've mentioned since bringing this idea up that I wanted the county to be involved in this process. I think before we issue an RFP or in tandem with issuing RFP to these top four, we need to formally invite the county, did have a conversation with one of the magistrates today, just review again that where we were with this and that I hope that the county will be interested so that we can look at our duplication of facilities and services in our parks departments and how we might streamline to better offer amenities to a larger community and add things like regional trails throughout our county, starting in the city, going to adjoining counties and interesting sites like Old Taylor Distillery, for instance. But I want to make sure as we're going through this process that our Parks Board is fully involved and helping direct the process. I think that they need to be directly involved in, in this RFP and lending or really relying on their experience quite a bit to help out. And I don't know if anyone can answer yet. Has the Park Board reviewed the potential RFP? I know it's been drafted for some time. But I'd like to make sure they have comment before that goes out. But I do want to make sure that we fast forward this, I would like to have something completed by late fall, which I know is really pushing it in terms of, of usual planning exercises, but I think it's doable and we can have something that is viable and, and able to be implemented, to be adopted by the end of the year, so that next spring or over the winter projects can maybe be started to, that we've identified as part of this planning process.
Mayor.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Sauer, go ahead.
Mayor, I certainly appreciate Commissioner Wisman's comments. He made the same comments back in February. We had first reading of this particular ordinance of February the 3rd, I believe it was, and then second and final passage on February the 24th. The way it already has been designed, I see problems in the future by entertaining our county cousins at this late date. The, I could see very quickly that, you know, we weren't involved when you were selecting the, the people that are going to look at this plan, the consultants. You know, and, and that's going to be a real problem, so I would move that we continue on our path that we have.
But guys, can you hear me now?
Oh yeah, there you go. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm just, I'm sorry, guys, I apologize, my internet, man, is just, whoo. Oh, well, I, I'm sorry, I, I really didn't get Commissioner Sauer's, the gist of Commissioner Sauer's comments. So if he wouldn't mind just sort of summarizing for me, I would, I'd love to hear it.
Okay, Commissioner Sauer, would you?
Commissioner Tippett, I simply appreciated, expressed my appreciation for Commissioner Wisman's idea of involving the county, but I think this, this is too late in the game to do that. One of the reasons that I'm concerned about that is that we've already selected four consultants to take a look at and do the final plan. So I, you know, we had the opportunity and Commissioner Wisman mentioned those same concerns back in February. We had first reading, we had second reading that passed five to zero, and I don't think we need, we can wait till fall or, or December to move forward on a, on a project that we've been working on really since last December.
Mayor, if I may?
Commissioner Wisman, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, John, Commissioner Sauer, I completely agree, I don't mean to delay at all. I've had this conversation weeks and weeks ago with City Manager that wanted the county to be involved. And I think Lakeview is, is important to involve in this process as well as some potential for external county parks that might tie into some city functions, and I don't mean to delay the process, I would like for a completed park plan to be done for us to adopt by the end of the year. But this is the time, if ever the county was going to be involved, that we invite them to be, and we did already approve five to, or five all to request the county to come in to be involved. So now that we have today identified four potential respondents, contractors to develop the plan for us, it is the time to ask the county to be involved, I believe, at this juncture, before we finalize that RFP. But, but I don't, but I don't on issuing the RFP, just know that the scope of the project could be potentially expanded, but I think we need to have an answer right away as soon as possible from the county if they'd like to join in or not. Or they could potentially do something in tandem with us.
City Manager wants to be recognized, go ahead.
Be glad to reach out to the judge and see if they put that on their next agenda. Only if it won't delay the current timeline that we have in place. Response is being in by May 11. But I'll, I'll reach out in the morning, see if they put it on their agenda, see if they want to participate, if they do, we'll ask the consultants to do the cost estimate and break out what it costs to do that, fortunately, along with them.
Mayor? Mayor?
Commissioner Sauer?
Our Parks Department's
Commissioner Sauer, go ahead.
Our Parks Department Select Committee has made a decision to qualify for our consultants. And those consultants are going to put in an RFP by May the 11th for our consideration. I see nothing but problems in asking the county to join at this late date. If anything goes wrong, not, not satisfactory to the, all, any member of the fiscal court, we're going to have headache after headache after headache. I think we should move for, forward with the plan that we have.
Commissioner Tippett, your name is flashing up, are you talking? Okay. All right. Any further discussion?
I agree.
I'm sorry. I'm getting a lot of, I'm getting some echo now, is anybody else getting echo? All right, are we ready to move on? To next item? Okay, next item would be upgrades at Apple View Park. Commissioner Tippett, I'm seeing that you're talking, but I can't. Do you want to be recognized, Commissioner Tippett? Wow, that was inaudible. Commissioner Tippett, could you repeat that please?
Question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I had, I had a question for the City Manager.
Okay. Go ahead.
I just, I wanted to know if this
Commissioner Tippett, go ahead.
Had, had any further consultations with the state? Okay, I, I just want to know if the City Manager had any further consultations with the state as far as the lease agreement goes.
Okay, we, we have, we've had a very recent email exchange with the state and my, I believe they're drafting, draft something for consideration. Could have language in it that would protect significant investments. But they, there was a recent conversation, we don't have exact language yet, but they're considering our request to add language that would protect significant investments we make on Capital View.
Mayor, two things. I will note that the item number ten, item number 10 regarding Capital View Park had in its are, are we there yet? Am I on?
We are.
Anyway, item 10, item 10 had language in it, upgrades to fields. One of the things that was passed in our ordinance on November 24th was $10,000 investment in field lighting to Legends as well as Williams Field. I would like to, I would like to see that move forward as well. And while I have the floor, I'd like to ask staff to go ahead and prepare a request for an RFP regarding item 16, which is sour feels lighting. Not to exceed the budgetary appropriation. And in concert with the Parks Master Plan, substandard wooden lights would be replaced by new metal poles with appropriate fixtures and LED lights on field one. Field two has existing standard metal poles, but existing substandard light fixtures, which would be replaced with LEDs. The current wooden poles on field one have been in place since 1995 and are starting to crack. Replacement is a vital safety concern and upgrading the existing convalescent, convalescent light bulbs with LED would provide better illumination to fill in the dark spots which exist on the playing field. The LED lighting provides a greater energy saving to benefit the city. Lighting upgrades provide increased opportunities for the Frankfurt Independent High School girls and boys soccer programs, including the middle school, the KHSAA, All A Tournament and the upcoming schedule. KHSAA. The 11th Regional Girls State Tournament this fall. Finally, LED lighting creates more desirable fielding opportunities for club, traveling soccer programs in the area, including semi-professional adult soccer. Sorry for the echo.
Sorry, that was a very specific motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second back, Commissioner Tippett. Commissioner Wiseman, you're by slide. You, you want to be recognized?
Could you restate the motion, John? I'm joking.
As you all, as you all well know, this is, this isn't a request or proposal. We're going to see what they have as far as their estimates go. It can be high or low. Our estimates in the, in the past have been all over the place. We don't have to accept, we can reject if it comes in over the appropriated amount. That's all I have to say.
May I call a question?
Any other, any other questions?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Waldridge? Go ahead.
I am completely aware that the lights are listed. Yes, we do need lights at this field. I just don't understand why we're getting the cart before the horse still. We, we don't know what this upgrade that the Masters Park Plan is going to be. Two fields, three fields, or what it might be. And I'm not understanding or replacing any lights right now. I mean, if I was building a house, I wouldn't put lights up in my house before I knew where my rooms were going to be. So I just think that we're thinking a little quicker than we need to right now on RFP for lights, when we're not sure why we're going to have these fields. There's a hill there where the stadium seating is right now and the lights are on the hill sort of. Are we, would that be flattened? You know, I don't know what that looks like going forward in our parks plan. And I just think that buying some lights right now is just putting this cart before the horse.
Just to respond, Commissioner, of course, the lighting is not substandard on field three and field four. We did have a, do have, excuse me, the girls soccer recently coming to us. We need to clean field one and field two for perpetuity.
Mayor. Mayor.
City Manager.
Thank you. Well, one other option. Looks like some of the softball fields, we got an estimate of $10,000. Make some temporary fixes. Now, they wouldn't be the most optimum, but another option here would be to make the temporary fixes needed if it were $10,000 to $15,000 to get us through another year. Y'all could delay the commitment on $400,000. But that's just an option for you all to consider and it, and things have changed since you all made the budget amendment in February. We had an alliance with the two county schools and the city schools that were all playing soccer on these fields. Now the county system is building turf. So two thirds of the current use has disappeared. So that's just some things.
Mayor, do we have a motion on the floor? I think I made the motion, right?
Yes. Anyone else? We do?
Call for the question.
We did. All right. Is there, are you all ready to vote? Is there any other questions?
Mayor, can I just ask one question?
Go ahead and clerk, please call the roll.
I would like to hear what Ms. Ross has to say.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I don't know if you all could hear me. I just want to make sure that, that if we go forward with this, we do get something in writing from the state.
I think we're getting a long delay now, very, very ready.
I was, I was just saying, I would like to, for us to have something in writing from the state that says they're okay with us moving forward with, with sizable improvements on the property before we do say. So we'll work on that.
Counselor?
Yes.
Counselor, I am fine with that thought, you know, it's, it's going to take some time to put the RFP together. Again, you know, we don't have to take it. And it also gives us time to get a response back from the state. So I'm in agreement.
Mayor, mayor. Laura, correct me if I'm out of, I think we're applicable here. I, I know we have a guarantee or some conversations with state facilities. But I would actually prefer that the mayor
Commissioner Wiseman.
To the governor to request additional consideration for Capital View Park. Ideally, we need to own this property so we don't have to go to the state every five, 10, or 100 years to get the okay to improve land that we, we hold, maintain and approve. I think it would be who of us to speak to the current governor who grew up here playing a lot of sports to make our request more formally directly to the governor and, and the bodies that be that, that we would like to take over ownership of that property. Mayor, I think you're on about a 30 second delay at this point, buddy.
Okay. All right, clerk, can you go ahead and call the roll, please, on Commissioner Sauer's motion, please?
Mayor, did we have a second? I, I missed a second on it.
Yes, I seconded it.
Commissioner Waldridge? Commissioner Tippett? Mr. Wiseman?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor, may?
Yes. Am I, am I delayed now?
About 10 seconds.
Mayor.
Wow.
Mayor.
Commissioner Sauer.
Mayor, while we're still on this subject, I would like to direct staff to take a look.
Yes, Commissioner Sauer, go ahead.
At the restroom facilities there between field one and field two. When we had the many, the boys regional, we caught more flack than we've ever seen before. So the request simply is to take a look at the restroom facilities and how we might expand it in an economical manner. Thank you.
So is there? Commissioner? Requested.
Was that in a motion, John, or just a personal request?
You know, I, I will take a personal request and maybe we can get an agreement on that. But members of the commission saying, yes, we ought to take a look at the restrooms there between one and two.
Sure, let's, let's look at it.
Are you okay with that, Eric?
I agree with that.
Yeah, yeah.
And we, I'll remind everybody too, we'll have staff look at it, but we also have a master plan that is evaluate that as well. We'll have staff take a look.
In my mind, anything we can go ahead and do that will up, in, inform the master plan, we're going to have to look at all these things anyway. So we might as well get ahead of it.
Excellent point.
Good idea. All right, thank you. Next item is the portable stage and we got a bid in from two companies and our recommendation is to go with they are a company in Indiana, right across the river from Louisville. And we can actively send folks there for training. And it won't cost anything if we go to their facility, which is about an hour or so from here. They can act with, with the add-ons, with the would need to may have a basic stage and it'd be 150,000, 440,000. Tommy Russell said had included the loading ramp and I'm not sure that it does. If that's the case, it would be another
Mayor, could we ask you maybe to
Probably $1500.
Mayor, could you possibly pause your video for just a second and restart? It's cutting every other word out.
Pause my video?
Pause and restart might let you clear up your delay.
Is anyone, does anyone have any questions on this or is there any other things that you guys want to share while the mayor's trying to get his streaming going?
I have, I have a question. Ms. Mayor Pro.
Yes, Scott, go ahead.
I was just, maybe the City Manager would, would know that we would have ample opportunities to, to rent the stage that we purchased to help defray the cost. Wouldn't that not, is that not the case?
City Manager.
We have, what was the question? We have ample opportunity to do what?
He's asking if we can rent the stage to defray the cost.
We could rent oh, rent out oh, rent out the stage that we bought. We could do that. We'd have talked our interest better on liability stuff and, and make sure we're properly covered, but, uh, we could rent it out and kind of recoup some costs.
I think that's always been the intent, specifically for, um, larger events that, like the, the Black Cat Chase, for instance, that already rents a stage or some of the other festivals in town.
I have, I have a suggestion. Um, Ms. Mayor Pro-Tam? As soon as we come out with this social distancing thing and we have ample opportunity, we should use that new stage and throw a party.
I would agree.
Or the community.
Working on a September 5th, is it? Derby? Festival idea coming up.
Yeah, I think there's several people in our community that are working on different things. We also have some of the concert series that have been pushed back, that will also take our concert series later. So that's a positive, which will, this will also be used for it as well, and we are aware that our mayor does play drums and he has a fan, so I'm sure he'll be throwing some concert series and things of that nature as well. Is there any other questions or concerns in regards to this portable stage?
If it's proper and in order, uh, Mayor Pro-Tam, I move that we, uh, agree, uh, with the stage acquisition.
We have two bids on, uh, we have a bid on tape, we have a low bid. Do you all want to accept the low bid?
We were, we were wanting to, the, the reason, the low bid isn't the one in Indiana, correct?
I believe the low bid is the one in Indiana.
Across the river?
I think it is.
That's the one we want, right?
Right, yeah, because that's going to cost, that's going to put our travel costs and things of that nature down. We're wanting to go with the one in Indiana. Could someone make a motion?
Do we have the name?
Eric, do you want me to read? Let me see if I've got.
We didn't get that in our packet, or I would look it up.
Commissioner, I want those in together.
I didn't see it. Oh, it's with that, okay.
It was still in your mailbox today at like 3:30. 153, 414, and the other bid was one, was that 123, 520?
Yeah, I think so.
All right, I'm back.
There we are.
Hello?
Was that bid 123, 520?
Hello, could you all hear me?
We can, Mayor.
Yes.
I couldn't catch your thing, I was just- All right, so the, with the hat, that was just the flat stage without the add-ons. What we added on to it, Blair should have the latest bid that would, um, include things like stairs and riffs on the bench. And the sound wings for the sound setting off of.
Can you guys hear me? This is Blair.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the Century Industries bid, um, with all of the accessories that we specified and the training cost comes to 153, 414. And then the stage line bid with those same accessories and training cost comes to 154, 540. The stage line bid, it's, it has everything highlighted and then broken out into those three categories. So it just looks different, but that's the difference. So the, with everything together, the, the Century Industries bid is the lowest.
And plus they're closer.
Right.
Blair, that title, that was Century-
Industry. Industries, yes.
I move that we go with the lowest bid of Indiana company Century Industries for the purchase of our stage and all add-ons.
Moved, moved by Commissioner Waldridge.
Clarification before a second, Mayor, do we need to, um, also make an appropriate budget amendment? As part of this, we allocated 125, I believe, Laura.
Okay, it's a technical question, I like, um, city solicitor, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, and we did allocate only 125, so that will require a budget amendment.
Eric, can I say, uh, there's, there may be some leftover spending authority from getting closed down and, uh, releasing some, uh, part-time employees. There may be an opportunity to use some existing spending authority, but we'll come back to you at the next meeting, at first reading on our budget amendment just for the stage, or we'll advise you if we have the authority.
I'll second then, good motion.
Second, and quick question, Ms. Ross, we can go ahead and go ahead and start building it, correct?
I'm sorry, Mayor, what, was your question, can we, can we go ahead and have them start building it?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I think we can do that because I, what I'm hearing is that you all have a commitment to purchasing the stage even though it's $2,000, um, over what was appropriated, so I think we can go forward.
Okay, and the reason for that, the first one was a 24 by 24, and we were looking for a 24 by 32. Okay. All right, thank you, sorry. So motion and a second. In discussions. If not-
Do we have a timeframe for construction? Do we have a construction timeframe for delivery? As part of the quote?
I'll ask Laura to answer, she has seen a timeframe.
90 to 120 days because of the COVID-19 delays. And she said depending on what was on it, how quickly they can do. So, the sooner that we let them know, the better.
Mayor?
Commissioner Sauer, are you talking?
I think, yes, I think it'll be a great acquisition. Let's get on it.
Okay, thank you. Um, any other questions? Okay, if not, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldridge? Commissioner Tippett?
Absolutely, yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Uh, I vote yes. Motion pass it, and that is the last item, so, thank every, thank you all for enduring this with us, um, next item would be adjournment.
Move to adjourn, Mayor.
Second.
Move to adjourn, Mayor.
I saw Commissioner Tippett first, but I couldn't, I couldn't hear his voice, uh-
I think, I think Commissioner Wisman has talked simultaneously.
I don't know who, was it Commissioner Waldridge?
Wisman first, Waldridge second, Tippett for the delay.
Okay, so motion second. Okay, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Okay. Those opposed, like a son. Hopefully y'all can hear me. And we are adjourned.